Good evening, everyone. Before I begin the regular city council meeting, closed session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. If you didn't obtain a number and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room and city staff will issue you one. At this time, I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting, closed session. The time is 5:38. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Horn?
Present.
Councilmember Sosa?
Present.
Mayor Protem Trujillo is absent. And Mayor Formetta?
Present. Thank you. Now is the time for public comment, and I remind speakers that this public comment period is reserved for comments about the items listed under the closed session agenda. There will be an opportunity later in the meeting for general public comment, and this is a business meeting, and we have business to attend to. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council regarding closed session items. If we have any speakers, may come forward. Good evening.
Esquire, City of Downey, retired finance employee, six years Southgate, 31 years with Brea. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My comments are first as follows. Under closed session, you have different lawsuits that are listed. However, just looking at it, there's no way that you can actually stimulate public comment for informed comments to the council. I want to know that once you have either been served or you've served a complaint, that's a public record under the CPRA, and I'd like to know if you would consider in the future having also a support packet with the most recent complaint filed. My second comment is still involving litigation, and it involves Downey sues along with 12 other cities on Friday at the 11th hour. I don't know if that's your potential litigation issue or whatever, but what I will ask for, and I guess it's a CPRA request, I'd like a copy of the case number, and I'd like to know how Downey filed it. Did you file it separately, or did you add yourself to the plaintiff class? Thank you.
Thank you for that. City Clerk, did we receive any written correspondence for public comment regarding closed session items?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, I will close public comment, saying no more speakers. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so ordered by the mayor. The city council will now recess to closed session under the following authorities. Number one, Government Code Section 54956.9D4, initiation of litigation, one potential case. Number two, Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Martha Aguayo versus the City of Downey, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number 22NWCV01348. Number three, Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation regarding Alquies Film forming foam products liability litigation, United States District Court for the District of South Carolina, Case Number 2.28118MN2873-RMG and 2.21-CV-00848-RMG. And the last one, Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the City of Whittier at all, Superior Court of the State of California, County of Los Angeles at all, Los Angeles County Superior Court, Case Number 23STCP03579. We will now recess to closed session. The time is 5:42. Everybody? We will now reconvene from our closed session. Mr. City Attorney, would you announce any closed session action?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. The city council tonight convened on all the items listed in closed session and addressed each one of them. The reportable action was as follows. First, by a vote of three to zero, the city council approved the filing, or the potential filing for civil injunctive relief against a business engaging in illegal business activities. And second, by a vote of three to zero, the city council ratified the City of Downey's participation in the matter entitled City of Whittier versus Los Angeles Superior Court, Los Angeles Superior Court, Case Number 23STCP03579. This case is a legal challenge to prohibit the further implementation of the bail schedules that took effect on October 1, 2023, in Los Angeles County. The City of Downey is participating in this case along with 11 other plaintiffs, and the case is now proceeding. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Before we begin the regular city council meeting, open session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during our public comment period must obtain a number card from the city clerk. And if you didn't obtain a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room and city staff will issue you a number card. As you know, lining up during public comment will no longer be permitted, and each speaker shall remain in their seat until their number is called. And the time clock will begin when you get to the podium. At this time, I will now like to call to order the regular city council meeting, open session. The time is 6:37. City Clerk, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Horn?
Present.
Councilmember Sosa?
Present.
Mayor Protem Trujillo is absent. And Mayor Formetta?
Present. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Glenn Cravick from Calvary Chapel Downey to the podium to lead us in the invocation. Please stand.
I, you know, for Cancer Awareness Month, so I got this at the AYSO soccer team this Saturday. My little girl plays on a Downey team, so we support Downey. And two of my family members were taken by that dreadful disease of cancer, so we need to pray for that also. So I'm so thankful that I can come here and lift up this meeting. A word that I want to give to you, it says that without vision, the people perish. So that's a prayer for each and every one of you that run this city, that you would have vision that would direct and guide this great city of Downey. Amen? So let us pray. By the God, I thank you and I praise you for who you are, the Creator, the heavens and the earth, Lord God, and anything and everything that we face. Lord God, you have the answer. So I pray that the city council would seek you, would look for that knowledge that can only come from you. The wisest man in history was Solomon, and he sought your face, and you gave him wisdom. And I pray that same wisdom would be given to each and every person in a leadership position here in Downey. And may God bless each and every one of them. May God bless Downey. And we do this in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. If you would please remain standing, I would like to welcome Scout, the Boy Scout Troop Two, and they will lead us in the flag salute this evening. Would you please proceed to the front and lead us in the flag salute?
Color Guard, advance. I would like everyone to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. All those in uniform, please put the flag. All those non-uniform, put your right hand over your heart. Running, begin.
Thank you, Boy Scouts of America, Troop Two. Would you please give them a round of applause? You may be seated. We certainly appreciate the Boy Scouts and the Boy Scouts of America as an organization for what they do to continue to teach the new generation service, service to country, service to community. Thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you for the phenomenal job you continue to do with our youth, helping raise and direct young men and women of integrity and service to their communities. God bless you for that. At this time, once again, it is so nice to see everybody in attendance. Thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight, we have a special night. We have some special presentations. I do want to acknowledge my dear colleague and former colleague and now state assembly member, Blanca Pacheco, who's in the audience with us tonight. Thank you for joining us. I would also like to acknowledge another dear friend who is so special and has done so much for this city through her years as a foster care mom and also as former president and school board member of Downey Unified School District, Martha Sodatani. And of course, we have Michael Calvert, Executive Director of the Downey Chamber of Commerce with us. And we have also a dear friend in the audience, Aleister Hunter, who is the President of the Downey Arts Coalition. We also have other members of the Downey Arts Coalition, Downey Arts Council. Thank you for joining us. And we also, I would be remiss if I did not welcome my husband, Noveris Frometta, who's in the audience. And Downey Cemetery Board Commissioner, Brian Hayman, who is in the audience as well. Thank you for joining us. Pat Gil, thank you for joining us tonight. And the former president of the Downey Chamber of Commerce, Carmen Gonzalez, thank you for joining us. And of course, our police officers, our men and women in uniform who are joining us here tonight. I know we have a special presentation, and we'll get to that in just a moment. But first, I want to get to our council member comments and requests for agenda items, starting with my far left council member Timothy Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to report that I've attended two of the networking meetings at the Downey Chamber of Commerce in the past two weeks. I also represented the city at the Dream Life Realty ribbon-cutting ceremony. I attended the mayor's prayer breakfast, and I also attended the State of the Schools breakfast. I attended the Downey Cemetery Tour, celebrating 150 years of Downey. And I also toured the Downey Historical Society Museum last night. In doing so, I'd like to make a request to the city. At our February 14th, 2023 City Council meeting, we identified six Downey historical structures for inclusion under the City of Downey Historical Preservation Ordinance. I would like to consider, the city to consider and evaluate the potential of including the Downey Police Department's arch, which is nearby, as well as the I'm always bad at this one, this Mewks House, which is located next to the Historical Society's museum in order to protect the historical preservation that is there. My second request, or do I need a vote on that at this point?
You can ask for it now, or we can do it.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, thank you. Second request is, when I was touring the Downey Historical Society Museum last night, due to the many artifacts, books, and historical documents, I was able to view potential hazards while touring the museum. I would like an evaluation, the city to make an evaluation whether or not, whether it's a private or city-owned or subsidized, it's on city property. So I would like the city to evaluate and assist Mr. Bob Thompson, who is the president of the Downey Historical Society Museum, on potential incidents that may happen there if we don't correct them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Horn. Councilmember Sosa?
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It's good to see a good turnout tonight. I attended the Celico Workforce Development 40th Anniversary Celebration. I was joined by Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco, along with our city manager Roger Bradley. Celico Workforce Development is a great organization that offers a lot of resources and training for job seekers or just people who are employed who are looking for additional skills. Give them a good look. And speaking of Celico, there is a big job fair coming up. They have one once a quarter, and this time it's Downey Stern to host, and that's going to be next Friday. It's going to take place at Apollo Park from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And so those of you looking for jobs or looking for a better situation, you know, just come dressed and pressed with resumes in hand. Different sectors will be represented, such as healthcare, IT, manufacturing, hospitality, aerospace, trade and logistics, businesses and professional services, and many more. We're anticipating at least well over 70, 80-plus representatives from these different sectors and companies. So also, I want to lift up the family of Emilio and Annabelle Guerrero. In prayer, we were praying for them specifically for their two daughters. And that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sosa. Once again, welcome, everybody, those of you here present and those watching us via YouTube. First, I would like to offer my heartfelt prayers and condolences to the Guerrero family, Emilio and Annabelle. Annabelle was a teacher at Matt Price Elementary School, where my three girls attended, and they remember her well. And this is a devastating loss for our community. And if, I know there will be services for this family. And as Downey, we have always come together. We are that community that comes together and supports one another. The Guerrero family have left three young girls, three young ladies, without the parents, and we can only pray for them. Pray for strength during this time, but again, as a community, come together and offer our support. I know Our Lady, excuse me, St. Raymond's, will be holding a vigil later this week, I believe Thursday. And more information I know is being posted in the social media platforms. And again, our heart goes out to the family during this devastating loss. I also want to offer and publicly condemn the attacks against Israel and the people of Israel over the weekend. And these attacks, these unprovoked attacks against civilians, really have thrown our country certainly into a very difficult position. And as allies, we will continue to support the people of Israel. And I want to say that I, along with my family, stand with the people of Israel at this point in time. Moving on, I would like to report I did attend a few events. As many of you may know, my daily job duties were impacted last week with a certain work stoppage, and I was unable to attend certain Downey-related events. But aside from that, I did have an opportunity to attend over the weekend a law enforcement appreciation day in the city of Laverne. And you would say, why Laverne? Well, many cities, including law enforcement agencies, were invited to attend a law enforcement appreciation day. And this was really a wonderful opportunity to join many surrounding cities, including the city of Pasadena, Pomona, Laverne, and many others, and standing firm in support of our law enforcement. And I also had the great opportunity to attend the kickoff event to our week-long celebration of Downey's 150th birthday, which is actually October 13th. But we began with a historical tour of our Downey Cemetery on Sunday. And I had the pleasure of seeing, of course, Brian Hayman, the Commissioner for the Downey Cemetery, as well as members of the Downey Historical Society and members of our community. We, I also, of course, attended the mayor's prayer breakfast. Thank you to our law enforcement officers, our chief, and many others, our city manager, Councilmember Sosa, Councilmember Horn, and others that attended. Downey is a unique city, and as we have been over the last 150 years, we continue to be a lighthouse, and we must continue to come together and again, pray for our leaders, our law enforcement, our first responders. And last, but certainly not least, I do want to acknowledge and say thank you to our Director of Parks and Recreation, Jason Chacon, and his staff for the fabulous job you did with Havana Nights this year. We had an overwhelming turnout on September 29th, on a Friday night. And thank you also to Public Works and our director for the staff in allowing this event to be as well organized and as well put together. Thank you, staff. Really, thank you. There were people not only from our community, clearly, but there were people that come from as far as, you know, Glendale, Burbank, the Ellen Empire, with Downey roots, that at some point, they lived here, they have family that still lives here, and they really appreciate this event. So thank you. Thank you to law enforcement officers who were there. They also provided great safety and security, and there were no reports of any issues at that event. And there were probably over 7,000 people in attendance. And so again, that just speaks to the nature of our community. And thank you to Assemblymember Pacheco for also being at that event. We appreciate that. I have a few items for staff that I would like to focus on. And of course, this is more or less, and I know our city manager will speak in more detail on some issues, but I did want to continue to emphasize the need for continuous speed enforcement throughout our city in light of the events of this past weekend. In fact, we were at the Downey Cemetery, starting our tour, when we heard the sirens going by. And again, little did we know that that tragic accident had just occurred. But we need more speed enforcement, especially in our main thoroughfares. I know more and more people are speeding these days. And while this particular situation is still under investigation as to the cause, but I do want to say, we all drive through that, our city, and we see Firestone and Florence and Lakewood and Stewart and Gray and Gardendale and Imperial, Paramount, and people are driving at incredible high rates of speed, not adhering to our speed limits at all. And I think we really need to continue to remain vigilant on that. I would also like to ask for more code enforcement, and I know we've been saying this a lot, that we need more code enforcement in our shopping centers, and particularly to contact the management at shopping strips and shopping malls. Because, and I don't know if our residents know this, but the city is not necessarily responsible for the trash that accumulates in a particular shopping center. That is a responsibility of the management of that center. However, we are responsible for making sure we enforce that the management adheres to our city codes and that we maintain a safe and clean environment for our residents. But in particular, I know some residents had reached out regarding Reeve Square. There was some trash issues there, as well as the gateway, right here on Firestone Boulevard, as well as the area of right across from CVS on Paramount in Florence and that shopping center across from CVS as well. And also at this time, I would like to request staff to bring a status report or discuss Rancho South Campus development. And further on that, I also would like to call on for the creation of an ad hoc committee that would study the development there and how we go about RFQ process or development. I can get a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Also, I would like an update on the downtown parking structure, particularly on the repainting that we had discussed some weeks ago. I know we've been busy with a lot of things, but particular about that. And also, an update on the security measures regarding the downtown parking structure. And last, looking at ballards, those in the downtown area. As we continue to have evening events and more events in that area, I know we had had conversations with the Downtown Association, and I would like to discuss or get an update from staff where we are with cost and in the possibility of installing those ballards. That's all I have for today. Thank you. And moving on, city manager comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a couple of items. Quickly, there was, I don't think I heard a second on the evaluation of the Downey Historic Society potential for safety issues at the building. Was there a second on that item for staff to work on that?
Sure.
Second. All right, thank you. Speed enforcement, we're happy to work on that. I mean, thoroughfares, as well as looking code enforcement, our shopping centers. And then the updates, yeah, we're happy to provide updates on those items as requested. Thank you, Mayor. I did want to say a couple of things in light of some recent public safety incidents that have occurred here in the community, and provide somewhat of an update on some of the proactive security measures. We are taking a staff to deal with issues at our live entertainment establishments. We definitely take public safety serious, and we've seen some issues occurring recently in our community. And we are trying to be proactive in addressing these concerns so that we can return our community to a safe status. Primarily, I've asked the chief to bring together our live entertainment establishments within the next two weeks to work on best practices and security. We'll put together a workshop with these people, with the police department, special enforcement officers, our code enforcement officers, as well as staff from the ABC, the alcohol beverage control agents, that will be there to help, to assist with this, really covering, again, city rules and regulations, looking at ABC regulations as well. And really, again, I want to make sure we start focusing in on security best practices and really putting an emphasis on the importance of living by and living with the city's expectations for security and safety within our community. Looking at some of the security measures that have been talked about from the City Council, we are looking at the security cameras within the downtown. We're really focusing in on Downey Avenue, Firestone Boulevard, and Lorena Avenue. I've talked with the police department. We're going to be increasing our presence in the downtown area. So you'll see foot patrols from Thursday through Saturday in the downtown in the evenings, especially as it's around the areas of live entertainment. We will be expanding some of our security. We will be expanding some of our security contracts in the downtown area and looking really, well, actually throughout the community in parking lots that the city owns and operates to maintain safety in those areas. As far as enforcement is concerned, staff will reviewing all our live entertainment establishments, their conditional use permits and their security plans to ensure they are complying with all city-imposed conditions, as well as looking at their security plans to make sure they are complying with those as well. The Police Department, through our special, with our special enforcement officers, along with ABC agents, will conduct inspections through ABC's Informed Merchant Preventing Alcohol-Related Tendencies or IMPACT program, which is focused on reducing alcohol-related crimes in and around licensed areas within our community. The city also will be deploying our inspection teams, which will consist of building and safety, police, fire, code enforcement personnel to these establishments, again, to make sure that they are complying with cities' regulatory codes. And finally, we're really looking at some of our policies, looking at our administrative fines for violations, and looking to bring some things to council to discuss appropriate levels of fines for violations of our code, as well as looking at some of our specific plans and rules and regulations around live entertainment establishments within our community. We have seen, you know, sort of a spike in safety issues in our community, and we will return it to normal very quickly. Just wanted to highlight a couple of other things that have come up. These are a little more positive in nature that staff is proud of and some things that we have received awards for in the past couple of days. In particular, the city was awarded the Clean Energy Champion Award by Southern California Edison on Friday, September 22nd, during the 13th Annual Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration. The Clean Energy Award is given to individual or company which has shown significant remarkable savings through cleaner installations in partnership with SCE. So, proud to see that be awarded to the city. And just today, we were informed that we were awarded the California Clean Energy Grant, or, sorry, Clean California Grant, an amount of $2.5 million to work on our alleyway program to continue to do our paving and beautify those areas within our community. So, we're happy to see that those are being awarded to the city. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Bradley. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring back to your attention is, again, as we continue celebrating Downey's birthday, 150th birthday, on this Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00, there will be a tour at Casa de Parley Johnson. And you are all invited to attend. This Saturday, October 14th, we will be culminating a week of events with Downey's 150th Anniversary Celebration. And that begins at 5:45 here at our Civic Center. We will have music and all kinds of activities to really commemorate this really special milestone for Downey. And I would like to also invite you to join us on October 19th. I know this is a great event that is always sponsored and put together by our Downey Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Michael Calvert. And that is the state of the city. That will be held on October 19th. That is a Thursday at noon, and that is at the Rio Hondo Event Center. With that, we have some presentations. I will be going down, down there. There we go. If I can ask Chief Murray to join me in this presentation?
I am really delighted because we have a very special thing that just occurred in our city. And I want you all to know that our city of Downey is committed to the health and the well-being of our community. And now, thanks to the wonderful partnership with Canine Companion, there is a trained police support dog who can provide needed comfort and care to individuals during difficult events. And I'm really proud of the work that our Downey Police Department has done and continues to do. Thank you to our chief, and thank you to our captains present, Captain Lochner, Captain Baker, and Captain Purino. Thank you. Chief?
Thank you very much, Mayor. We'd like to bring down Sergeant Ruth Valenzuela. Sergeant Valenzuela has been with our department for years, and she took the initiative to write a proposal to try and obtain a support dog. He's actually called a facility dog. And so, she went through about two years of that process of submitting the proposal, getting it vetted and approved. And then Canine Companions donates the dog. They come fully trained. And they very, they went through a thorough background process for Ruth to ensure a good match. And with that, I'd like to introduce to you Sergeant Ruth Valenzuela and her new partner, Howdy.
I'm doing well. All right. Thank you so much for being here, everyone. I'm Sergeant Valenzuela with the Downey Police Department. I've been with the department for approximately 17 years, as Chief Murray mentioned. This program has been approximately two years in the making since I started doing research for my proposal. We're always looking for ways to enhance and strengthen our community partnerships. And our facility dog program now plays a non-traditional role in supporting our mission to make a meaningful contribution to the quality of life in our community. So, I'm very proud to introduce you to my partner, Howdy. He is a full-bred, two-year-old Labrador Retriever. We obtained Howdy from the generous donation by Canine Companions for Independence. It is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that leads the service industry. It has bred, raised, and expertly trained service dogs since 1975. They provide service dogs to adults, children, and veterans with disabilities, and facility dogs to professionals working in healthcare, criminal justice, and educational settings. Canine Companions has the most current, well-respected, trusted program in the assistance dog industry and is accredited by Assistance Dogs International. This organization is considered the global authority in the assistance dog industry. Everything from breeding, training, support, was donated and is completely free of charge to us. Cost is estimated approximately $50,000. A facility dog, the main question I get sometimes is, and I already had it out there in the lobby, is what is a facility dog? So, Howdy is a professionally-trained assistance dog that works alongside a professional, myself, in a service capacity to assist others. Facility dogs or working dogs are especially chosen because of their calm demeanor and ability to work in high-stress environments. And as you know, our career is very stressful. And just to note why we use dogs. And it has been scientifically proven and research confirms that the presence of dogs reduces stress in humans. So, a facility dog is not a comfort dog, nor is it a therapy dog, which are very common terms used these days. In the service dog industry, if you want to get nerdy, you have to use the term "facility dog." And the difference between these dogs is that facility dogs are, it, the main difference is training and the accreditation. So, through ADI, Canine Companions uses their guidelines to train Howdy and myself. Howdy has gone extensive training, approximately six to eight months of training. And after he was trained, then I came to the picture and I was trained to handle Howdy. So, Howdy will aid in the investigation of crimes, provide comfort to victims and witnesses during interviews and court proceedings, help victims process grief and loss, lower tension and stress of community members and staff after traumatic events. He will work with children to build relationships and engage with the public during community events and much more. I am very grateful to Canine Companions for their support as we work through making this program our own. And I'm also grateful to my command staff and our city council members who support the program. And I look forward to working with Howdy in our community for years to come. Thank you.
And at this time, I would like to welcome and invite Assemblymember Pacheco to come up and say a few words. I, we are delighted she's here to make a presentation.
So, it feels so nice to be back here in council chambers. This has always been home for me, so it's so nice to see all of you. I want to thank the mayor and the council and city staff for allowing this pleasure to do this special presentation. As many of you know, I am your assembly member, formerly on City Council and mayor here in the city of Downey. And the reason why I'm here and the reason why this is such an amazing program is because this was one of my goals when I was mayor last year. And so, when I found out that it was actually going to come to fruition, I was excited. And I made sure to use the term "facility dog" because it was engraved in me, it's not a support dog, it's not a service dog, it's a facility dog. And so, I also want to commend and recognize Canine Companions for this, the work that they do in helping police departments, in helping hospitals, veterans. They do and are a great asset to our communities. But I actually was going to explain what a facility dog was and what Canine Companions was, but I think I was already beat to the punchline by our sergeant here. But I want to commend Sergeant Ruth Valenzuela for all of her work that she did, all the efforts that she put in to making this program happen. So, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart because you put in a lot of work. And to Downey Police Department, thank you. Thank you for all the amazing work that you do to keep our community safe. And having Howdy is just another great asset here in the city of Downey. And so, I have here a special certificate for Howdy. And it's actually for Howdy, and it says, "On behalf of the California State Assembly, I commend your outstanding service and dedication in the city of Downey as a Canine Companion. Your hard work impacting the lives of others goes beyond measure." Thank you, Howdy, for all that you do to better our community. I'm getting on the ground. So, I have this. And then, I also have a resolution. I have a resolution here, and it's a resolution in respect to National Service Dog Month. So, for the month of September, it is National Dog Service Month. And so, I may be a month late, but I have this resolution that I will be presenting to the Downey Police Department because we have canines here in the city of Downey, and now we have Howdy, our facility dog. And don't forget, it's a facility dog. Okay, so, thank you very much, Downey.
That was really wonderful, wasn't it?
Yes.
We, we definitely love animals. Those of us that have grown up with pets, they're just a joy. They're part of the family as well. This is, as we celebrate our 150th birthday as a city, I thought it would be particularly fitting to celebrate and to acknowledge people that have, there's so many people in our community that have done so much over the years. And as you see on the screen, and I will speak a little bit about these individuals, they're individuals that certainly love this community and have been involved in this community, have given of their time, their talent, and many times of their treasure as well. And I want to acknowledge that because Downey is what it is thanks to their work and their efforts. And I chose two individuals that I find very special. First, I would like to speak a little bit about Carol Kearns. Carol and her husband have lived in Downey for 35 years. They have two daughters and are proud grandparents. Following her retirement from teaching, Carol became involved in the cultural life of this city. She served on the Board of the Downey Symphonic Society for seven years, including one term as a vice president. In 2012, Carol proudly joined other arts activists in founding the Downey Arts Coalition. Serving as secretary and then treasurer, she worked to promote the arts in all its forms, exhibits of original work by local artists, monthly poetry readings at State Gallery and other venues, and innovative theater and music events at the Epic Lounge. She was a co-producer of the Broadway play "Defying Gravity", about the Challenger tragedy, which was presented multiple nights on the grounds of the Columbia Memorial Space Center for enthusiastic audiences. Carol and friend B. Romano, with the help of so many others, produced a free public music festival, "Make Music Downey." In support of the written arts, Carol edited a weekly column, shared stories, then that ran in the Downey Patriot for a few years, whose featured authors were members of a local writing class for seniors. Presently, Carol and her husband Frank are the owners of Los Nietos Press, which serves local writers by publishing their poetry and memoirs. Carol is herself a contributor with her local newspaper, the Downey Patriot. She is especially proud of her stories about Downey organizations that aim to help those in need. In 2019, Carol was honored to be elected president of the Downey Coordinating Council, only to discover that everything would go dark during the pandemic. When it was safe to do so, members came back to the meetings with spirit. The group resumed its well-known volunteer awards banquet, and I've had the pleasure of attending several times. Thank you, Carol. And this banquet celebrates those who donate so much of their time to making Downey and the world a better place. Currently, Carol is honored to serve as a Los Angeles County Commissioner for the Historic Landmark and Records Commission. And Carol is profoundly grateful to all Downey residents who have made the city such an enriching community. And again, it's just fitting that we would honor Carol during this week as we are celebrating Downey's 150th birthday for her work with the Downey Coordinating Council. And Carol, you will come up and speak a little bit- And Carol, you will come up and speak a little bit about that. But would you please join me in a round of applause as Carol comes up? So I would like to recognize Carol Kearns with the Mayor's Legacy Award on behalf of the citizens of Downey in recognition of your outstanding citizenship and activities enhancing the community of Downey. Your exemplary efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value, Carol, to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you, Carol, for being a champion for what is good and honorable in our community. Given this day, the Mayor's Legacy Award.
This is the mayor's town name?
Yes. And if you'd like to say a few?
Yes, I would. I want to say thank you. It was a real surprise. It's a real honor. But if my name is prominent in the minds of some people, it's just a reflection of all the wonderful people that I've had the privilege of working with in Downey. And as the mayor read, I became active after I retired. I got involved with the arts. And the people with the Downey Arts Coalition have done so much. Pat Gill, EJ Ball, Carolina Del Toro, her husband Jorge, they've worked so hard to consistently put on art exhibits, work of local artists. There's always new exhibits for major events like Dia de los Muertos and all of the symphony concerts. Lorraine Parks, who's done poetry matters that appears in the Patriot. She held meetings that went on for quite a few years and they were at places like State Gallery and the Epic Lounge. And people came from all of a sudden Southern California, sometimes significant poetry writers. Alistair Hunter, who's been so helpful with the theater and getting innovative theater projects and music projects at the Epic Lounge. And what can we say about the Epic Lounge? They have supported the arts in so many ways and so often in Downey. State Gallery, we've worked closely with Gabe. He's allowed the space to be used for the poetry readings. We had a book lunch there. Other art exhibits. And regarding the people with the Downey Coordinating Council, I joined them because I was a representative of the Symphony and the Downey Arts Coalition. And I'm just amazed at what all of these people do. Beth Jandrow is very active with food helps and distributing food to needy families. The Friends of the Downey Library was one of my early stories in the Patriot. They raise over $30,000 to $40,000 every year for the library. And all of the other people, Sal Cervantes, which has been on the board, Martha Sodatani, I could just go on and on. But I want to say thank you to all of the people I've just mentioned and the others whom I may have forgotten. And especially the Patriot, I should mention them because, right, they seem to like my stories. But they, you know, they published work by people who never thought they would see their work in print. And it was just such a wonderful thing to do. And there were actually important connections that were made through some of the stories where people read them and contacted the writer through Eric. So this award reflects my, everything that I've gained as well from knowing all these wonderful people in Downey. And this is very appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah.
I had so many people to remember. I did write them down. And I forgot one, two of the most important people that I talked with often, Bobby Bruce, who's with the Downey Historical Society, and Bob Thompson. They, I should have included you. I'm sorry you are always in my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to, I stand corrected. I was just reminded the current president of the Downey Arts Coalition is Pat Bill and the vice president is Alistair Hunter. So thank you both for being here. The next individual I would like to acknowledge and recognize with the Mayor's Legacy Award once again with, because of his efforts and his work throughout the years with the Downey Historical Society is Bob Thompson. Would you give him a hand, a round of applause? Let me, let me read to you a little bit about Bob. Bob grew up in the heart of Downey in the early 1940s and attended Alameda and EW Ward Elementary School. He continued his educational journey at South Junior High School and then at Downey High, graduate class of 1959. Following graduation, he enlisted in the US Army where he was a bridge specialist. After leaving the Army, he entered the workforce and in 1965, he was hired by North American Aviation. He retired from Boeing in 2007. What truly sets Bob apart is his extraordinary dedication to our city, Downey, and its history. Bob became involved with the Downey Historical Society in July of 2007 and he became president in July of 2013. Bob's service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to making our community a better place serves as an inspiration to us all. Bob is the proud father of three daughters, Christina, Gina, and Sarah. It is no doubt that as, as a member of this community myself for the past 34 years, I look up to all of you that have served this community for decades. You are an inspiration. And when we keep, when we talk about Downey's future being unlimited and when we talk about, you know, 2023, I do believe that Downey's best years are still ahead of us. I know we are nostalgic about our old Downey. We miss a lot of what was, the places, you know, Feral's when Stonewood was an open air, the movie theater, the Broadway. We miss a lot of that. But what hasn't changed is the spirit of our community, the spirit of we are here for each other. And it doesn't matter how long we've been here. When we are Downey, we are Downey and we want the best for this community. And I've had, I had the pleasure of being a speaker at the recent Downey Historical Society meeting with Bob and Bobby and many others. And it really just continues to inspire me and it should ignite the flame in all of us that as we continue to move forward and especially as we celebrate a milestone birthday, 150, that we look at our past, that we embrace our past and that we treasure it and that we find ways to continue to preserve it. And so with that, Bob, would you please come up and would you please give him a round of applause? So Bob Thompson, in recognition of your outstanding citizenship and activities enhancing the community of Downey. Your exemplary efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community, Bob, and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you, Bob, for being a champion for what is good and honorable in our community. Thank you. Thank you for your work with the Downey Historical Society. This is the Mayor's Legacy Award awarded to you on this day, October 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have something for the mayor. So it's a hat that the History Center developed. It's celebrating 150 years. So here's, and then you see on the sides, there's Apollo Downey Historical Society and then the airplanes which started it up. But thank you, Mayor Claudia, for this award. I'd like for the history members and boards to please stand up. Then, over here. Bobby Bruce over there, Roger Miller. By the way, his mother, Ruth Miller, ran the library for 17 years, I believe. Also, we have some members that couldn't make it, but I'd like to thank Andrea, Zoli, Jesus, and Gabe, and Jeff Valencia, and so on. We have a lot of youth. And I'd like to say for you young folks, you know, this is your city. And please take care of it, protect it. You know, don't let it go like some other cities surrounding us. And also, we need for you to come to the History Center so you can take the baton in later years. So come on down. So anyway, anybody have any questions for the Downey Historical Society? Please come and visit us. We have lots of stuff. I'm sure that you're gonna, oh, I remember. So thank you, Mayor.
Would you like?
Yes, Roger.
You're all very lucky. He normally tells the story about it coming out here on the way.
Well, we have one more presentation. It's last but certainly not least. We have, our Downey is also really blessed, very fortunate to have, to be a, have, be a biomedical hub and be a healthcare city. And with that, I would like to acknowledge that PIH Health Downey Hospital marks 10 years as part of PIH Health. October 1st marked 10 years since Downey Regional Medical Center became part of the PIH Health Network in 2013. As PIH Downey Hospital, over the last decade, PIH Health Downey Hospital has undergone many enhancements in modernization projects that have improved the facility's interior and exterior, creating a welcoming and safe environment for patients and visitors. Additionally, extensive technological upgrades, including the installation of state-of-the-art equipment, implementation of electronic medical records, and countless other updates were made to fully integrate the hospital into the PIH health system for seamless, streamlined, and coordinated patient care. Today, PIH Health continues to make campus-wide enhancements, including specialties, and most recently, the opening of a new retail pharmacy. The emergency department, you'll be happy to know, is now nearing completion of a multi-phase expansion which will help provide lifesaving services to even more members of the Downey community. PIH Health Downey Hospital has grown to be a regional healthcare leader, highly regarded for providing safe, compassionate, high-quality services. And we commend the exceptional care they provide for our residents. Would you please join me in commemorating the 10th anniversary of PIH Health Downey? We do have a certificate of recognition. And the certificate of recognition reads, "PIH Health Downey Hospital, on behalf of the citizens of Downey, congratulations on your 10th anniversary. We are honored to share in the celebration of this milestone and wish you continued success in the years to come."
Thank you.
And if you would like to say a few words?
Sure.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. It's an honor to be here. And on behalf of PIH Health family, we are very fortunate to have, celebrate our 10-year anniversary. Our mission is very simple. It's patients first and we continue to do that every single day and continue to keep our doors open for the community.
And to echo what Diane stated, you know, we're very thankful and grateful to have the opportunity and privilege over the past decade to serve our community. We believe in Downey. We want you the best that we can to provide the highest quality and compassionate care that we can to our community. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here with us.
We're gonna take the phone. Well, that was, uh, those were very special members of our community, and we thank you for, uh, your continued commitment to serving our city. Um, thank you again. At this time, we will now have public comment on agenda consent calendar and non-agenda items. If you didn't receive a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Members of the audience and speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Pino Code Section four oh three. The City Council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the city council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the city council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in tonight's meeting, from the members of the council here on the dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disturbs or disturbs and disrupts this meeting. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the city council, any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking, and any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Additionally, attacks of a personal nature on city staff or city council members that have no connection to agenda items or non-agenda items. I remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to me directly and not to any other council members, city staff or audience. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written, uh, correspondence regarding, uh, to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor. We received written correspondence from Kathy Perez, I'm sorry, Perez, in favor of the placement of a plaque at Furman Park commemorating the fifty-fifth anniversary of the carpenters. We also received correspondence from Erin Gatlin, resident, who also commented in favor of placement of a plaque at Furman Park to commemorate the anniversary of the carpenters. And lastly, we also received correspondence from Cassandra Eredia, who expressed concerns regarding Siaka operations. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk Duarte. I will entertain a motion in a second to receive and file the written comment.
Make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with Mayor Portembeil absent.
Thank you. Um, it appears we have, uh, seven speakers. Um, and, uh, we'll go ahead and have the three minutes. Um, Speaker number one may come up.
On Friday, the terrorist organization known as Hamas launched a major attack against Israel. I heard on the radio today that one thousand nine hundred Israelis and Palestinians are dead, and among the dead are fourteen Americans. I want you to know that I stand with Israel, and I hope everyone within the sound of my voice also chooses to stand with Israel. The newsletter of the National Pro-Life Alliance, their web address, W W W dot pro-life-alliance dot com. Abortionists fear the power of ultrasounds most of all. Although they use them to guide their abortion instruments, they resist showing the images to mothers. One instructor at Einstein Medical College urged abortionists in training to hide ultrasounds, not just from mothers, but also from abortion clinic staff. She warned, remember to turn the screen away from the plane of view. Staff also may find themselves increasingly disturbed by the repeated visual impact. Former abortion doctor Joseph Randolph stated, "The mothers are never allowed to look at the ultrasound because we knew that if they so much as heard the heartbeat, they wouldn't want to have an abortion." Abortionists may try to call themselves pro-choice, but the truth is that they suppress all information that would lead a mother to any choice but an abortion, observed National Pro-Life Alliance Executive Director Jenny Bloom.
Thank you for that. Speaker number two.
All right, a lot of feel-good, happy talk. To say the least, a lot of, a lot of smoke being blown at you more. This is worse than watching Joe Biden's press secretary sit there and tell you misinformation all day long. Facts are, the city is going to hell in a handbasket. We're having shootings. We have, uh, people scared to go downtown. People running downtown district are not accountable to anybody. We have corruption running rampant in this city and in these little groups. Uh, we're funding. Well, my question is, what has the previous mayor and the current mayor been doing when all this stuff has been going on? Well, because things have increased exponentially here, the crime. And, and the same token, we're sitting here leaving our police force woefully inadequate. It's been offered many, many times and suggested that we have more police officers. We don't need code enforcement or traffic enforcement. We need police officers. We need about nineteen police officers. Otherwise, we're still gonna have shootings. We're gonna have them at Mambo Grill. We're gonna have them over at the Glen. We're gonna have people afraid to go park in the parking lot behind the theater over there. Um, the Epic Lounge, you need to get that garbage off the street, make all the patrons go inside so all you Democrats can go ahead and party in there and have a good time. But don't do it out in the street and not on our dime. Our mayor has been working diligently to go to Naleo, the National Association of Latino-Elected Officials, and telling us how proud she was to emcee the event with Xavier Becerra, who said that we need to put masks on two-year-olds to save millions of lives during the virus that they foisted upon us. And then it was proud also to emcee the event with Alejandro Mayorkas, the Department of Homeland Security, uh, director, who is leaving our border intentionally wide open and facilitating the bringing in of military-aged men poised to attack us, just like it's going on over in Gaza. That's what they're bringing in here, and it's intentional. It's absolutely intentional, but that's what you get with the globalist Democrats and the Rhino Republicans. Now, they're gonna grandstand and say, well, I'm gonna take my Ukraine flag out, and if I'm gonna be a Rhino Republican, I'm gonna say, I support Israel. But if you're a far-left progressive communist, you're gonna take your Ukraine flag out, and you're gonna put Palestinian flag there. That's what's going on.
Thank you for that, B C. Um, speaker number three may come up.
Esquire Vietnam veteran, city of Downey. I am the son and the nephew of World War Two. I'm the nephew of Korea. It's my generation. We grew up in the civil rights movement. We grew up during the Vietnam War. We grew up with something called communism. Communism, Nazism, Fascism, they're all forms of socialism. Tonight, I want to bring honor to my law enforcement officers. On nine eleven, they had no table to honor their fallen, and that was not a mistake because I had sent information to certain people in this city. During National Police Week, did you fly their honor called the Thin Blue Line flag? No. I took this flag and I took it to six different police departments, one of which was the L A P D Division, and I handed it to a sergeant. On there, from nineteen fourteen to the present, were all of their fallen. I asked her, would you put this flag on display to the left-hand side? Oh, no. Chief Moore, the L A P D, no, 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 we can't have that being publicly displayed. It might have the wrong impact, but no, you can go hide it in some office. Well, speaking of which, I didn't see you flying my flag during National Police Week, which is the month of May when they honor their fallen, and we honor ours also, called the military. I went over to your lobby. Do I see any kind of a version of a Thin Blue Line flag in the lobby of our police department? No, we do not. I'm asking, I don't care if I have to go buy one or whatever, but this isn't right. You're not the city of Los Angeles, and thank God, it's, you're not the L A P D. But I want to bring this because my job is to bring them honor. I look at police and fire the same way I look at Army and Marine Corps. Their boots on the ground, same mud and same blood. This is all about their honor. Second, to attack the nation of Israel is to bring dishonor to the liberators from the Nazi Germany, who called World War Two veterans. To attack any Jewish temple on American soil is to bring them dishonor. That dishonor is my generation, for they are our parents. And this is about honor thy father and thy mother. You want to bring it here, fine, but then you'd be prepared to declare war on the Vietnam vets. We know what betrayal is, but we were never betrayed by our parents. We were betrayed by this country three times. I will bring that to your attention at the next meeting, but you attack the nation of Israel, bring it on. People are telling them to stand down. How would you like if they told you, the nation of Israel, to stand down on nine eleven? They have a right to defend themselves on their sovereign soil. Thank you. This flag is for the Downey P D.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that, Lee. Speaker number four, make them up.
Good evening, Mayor Flametta, City Council and staff.
Good evening.
First and foremost, I send my prayers to the people of Israel and Gaza, the civilians that are suffering and who had died. God bless them. Uh, it's very sad, very tragic. Also, my condolences to Emilio and his wife Annabelle. Uh, the fatalities, very tragic, very absurd, very sad. I'd like to address two issues today. The one, the first one is the rise in violence and crime in Downey. There's another shooting that occurred at the Glen. It's getting worse. Sad to say, but it is. So I'd like to see a change in that pattern. I suggested the four DUI checkpoints on the north, south, west and east entrances. This will prevent accidents, deaths and injuries. Also, criminals will avoid the city, so it will deter people from coming in. I think we should do something of that nature. Also have more officers along the beat in areas that are statistically high in crime, just have more officers patrolling. Also, planning for the future of Downey. It's proven, um, even Pope Francis talks about global warming. President Biden talks about global warming and climate change. Science has proven it. Temperatures are rising, so I think Downey should plan for this. We need renewable energy. We need alternative energy. So I think it'd be wise, we need a vast improvement in the city. So I think it'd be very wise to design a plan to turn Downey into a green city, a sustainable city, solar-powered, electric-powered, similar to San Francisco and Portland. A big question that's being proposed right now is what we're going to do with that large parcel of land on Bellflower and Washburn. With my expertise in city planning from the University of Southern California, I was observing it and analyzing that parcel of land. I think it would be a great idea to turn that into a plaza. Design a plan for a plaza that is eco-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. Have a big square walking path along all four corners with intersections in the middle. Include dining restaurants and cafes. I think we should incorporate a Barnes and Nobles in Downey. We'd like to read, bring some books, sophistication into Downey. I think it'd be good to have a Barnes and Nobles with the Starbucks inside. We could include it within that plaza. Thank you for your hard work, and God bless you all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Casas. Speaker number five may come up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Armando Urina. I never attended a, a meeting like this. I like it. Uh, I know you brought up the issue about the speed limit on the city streets and public safety, of course, but I wanna, I want to talk specifically about Brookshire Avenue between Alameda Street and Imperial Highway. It literally became a freeway. There is no stop signs in between Alameda and Imperial. There's no signal lights. It's been so many accidents. I've been there fourteen years, and I lost count of all the accidents. It is ridiculous. I brought my neighbor with me. He lost four cars already, him and his sons, because they park on the street. Cars go so fast, they lose control, and they wreck these cars. Four cars is ridiculous. Uh, it's been very bad accidents where people got badly injured. Uh, probably be dead after that, I don't know, or because the ambulance takes them. But it's about time that somebody takes action on that stretch. Everybody knows there's no stop signs, there's no signal lights. They, the average speed is sixty miles. Does, the speed limit is forty, but they go sixty. The only ones that obey the speed are the officers, the police officers. Well, unless they're on an emergency call, but everybody else goes sixty. So what I was thinking is, you have a speed limit of forty miles, reduce it to thirty-five and have those digital signs, those warning signs that let people know how fast they're going. That might help. They might slow down to fifty, and that is maybe more acceptable. And it creates a more safety, uh, atmosphere, more, more, more safety, uh, for the drivers, for everyone. You know, anybody that tries to walk across Brookshire, they get hit. I ask this for the accident, because they go, cars are going too fast on Brookshire. Cats, dogs, they try to walk across the street, they don't make it. So what I'm asking you is to do something about that stretch. Either put stop signs someplace or signalize, or at least reduce the speed to thirty-five and those digital signs that let people know how fast they're going. I checked North Brookshire. You guys have the speed limit at thirty miles, and you have those signs, those warning signs. So I like that. I'm asking you to do the same for the south side. That's all I'm here for.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
For coming.
Well, our Public Works Director, follow up with, uh, gentlemen, please.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate you. Um, speaker number six may come up.
Hello, Mr. Lacy.
Madam Mayor, members of the-
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Bradley and staff. Good evening. Comments this evening have to do with something which affects some of us now, but in all likelihood will affect more of us in the future. That has to do with the southern border of the United States. It is now unsecured. There's, as you watch the TV programs, they describe that there's sometimes ten thousand people a day coming across the border. Our border and customs organization try their best to try to get an idea and vet those particular people. And I'm sure they're doing their best, but it's probably not good enough. They don't know if people coming in with any diseases, fentanyl, you go up and down the line and you can see that it's a poor situation at all. Now, we have a statement made, it was alluded to earlier, Mr. Alejandro Mayorkas, wonderful gentleman. He happens to be the Secretary of the Housing Administration. And he said several times in the past, our border is secure. He stands in front of the mic and he tells the public, our border is secure. Well, some people think that that term, there's a technical concept to that term. The border is secure. And that technical name is bullshit. What he says, it's terrible. He lies in front of the public and the country and he expects people to believe that. It's estimated one and a half million people have gone through across the border and the US has no idea what is going on. I wish Mr. Mayorkas was here in front of me to debate this, but he's not. This ends my comments. I yield my remaining time back to you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Speaker number seven may come up. Speaker number eight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
I have a mixed bag to present. First, thank you for the recognition of the History Center and those that are pivotal within it. And thank you, the city, for considering taking a looking around and seeing what can be done to help it. I'd just like to add that any resources spent on that will come back to the city. I moved out of Downey in practically the last days of nineteen ninety-nine to escape what was then a threatened widening of the five freeway. We were gonna be the next house to it. So we got out of Dodge. Not far down the road in Garden Grove, close to work. Good thing we like the area because, well, you know, oh, nine eleven came and they didn't need Panasonic product trainers anymore. So, but I noticed similarities between Garden Grove and Downey. They're both established the same year. They both have a lot of the same problems. And I hear from Trump supporters and Biden supporters and everyone in between. And I can assure you that especially in cities run like this, you won't hear it. But there is an understanding that the big problems are in Sacramento and LA County. And that's where we need to blame and demand action. Anyway, thank you for keeping my growing uptown in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any more speakers tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to close public comment. Can I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with Mayor Portman through your absence.
Thank you. At this time is now time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with Mayor Portman through your absence.
We have one administrative report. And let's see. And that is waiver of city-related fees requested by the Downey Patriot on behalf of the Downey Foundation for Independent Journalism associated with the street closure permit for the inaugural kickoff festival for Downey Warren Week. The request is that the council consider and provide direction to staff regarding the applicant's request for a fee waiver of city fees, staff labor and material costs associated with the street closure for the Saturday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three crosstown kickoff event. Looks like the event was last weekend. City Manager Bradley.
Yeah, I'll ask Director Huitron to provide the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Director.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you is a request for waiver of city-related fees requested by the Downey Patriot on behalf of the Downey Foundation for Independent Journalism. On September twelfth of this year, the City Council approved this reclosure permit request for the inaugural kickoff event that took place on October seventh of this year, just about, just a few days ago, with approximately one thousand attendees. The crosstown kickoff event was produced by the Downey Patriot on behalf of the Downey Foundation for Independent Journalism. During the month of October, the Downey and Warren High Schools have each rivalry traditions that lead up to an anticipated Downey versus Warren football game that will take place this year on October thirteenth. The crosstown kickoff event, a family-friendly event, included vendors, food trucks, a fun zone, a live entertainment and took place from between three and nine PM along Brookshire Avenue. At the time of application, the applicant anticipated that the street closure permit approval would result in a street closure that would be covered by the applicant themselves. However, the applicant notified the city that there were unforeseen costs that have resulted in a financial burden and thus is requesting relief from the City Council on city-related fees. On September twenty-sixth, the City Council requested that this fee waiver request be placed on a future council agenda item, which is before you today. The applicable city fees and labor costs associated with the event are summarized in this table. If the waiver request is approved, the applicant would be responsible for paying the fees, would not be responsible for paying the fees to the city and would be refunded any funds deposited with the city. However, in the event that the waiver request is not granted, then the city will invoice the applicant for the total amount of fees listed here totaling six thousand five hundred and twenty-two, which would reflect the actual cost expended by the Public Works Department associated with the road closures and traffic control services. Approval of the request for the waiver on city-related fees will result in an estimated revenue decrease in the approximate amount of six thousand five hundred and twenty-two between the police, fire, Public Works Department accounts and the general fund. In conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council consider and provide direction to city staff regarding the applicant's request for a fee waiver of city fees and materials and labor costs associated with the street closure for the Saturday, October seventh, crosstown kickoff event. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Irma. Council members, do we have any thoughts or comments on this?
Yeah, one question I have, wasn't the, is that sixty-five hundred accurate? I thought the total ended up being under five thousand dollars.
The sixty-five hundred is inclusive of the police services, which is one thousand four hundred and twenty-five city permit-related fees for fire department special event fee and the public works fees, which are two hundred and thirty-two and sixty-five. And then the street closure services themselves, actually, I think you're right, that's four thousand eight hundred and you're correct. It's a slightly lower. The staff report was actually written with the higher amount when we didn't know when, what the actual expended fees from Public Works would be. But since then, we have actually calculated the real cost, which resulted in thirty-one hundred dollars from Public Works.
So the total now, Irma, is forty-eight hundred?
Yes, it's the total of two ninety-five plus fourteen twenty-five and thirty-one seventy-two and four thousand eight hundred and ninety-two and five cents. Four thousand eight hundred ninety-two and five cents. Thank you for that.
Thank you. You know, I certainly, over the last, over this last year, we have had many requests from various groups and organizations for the city to waive fees. And, you know, certainly, we want to help and we want to be partners. But at the same time, we recognize that, you know, the floodgates have now been opened and every organization is gonna continue to come to the city requesting funding and waiving of fees. I know that Harlan Downey Chamber of Commerce has the event, you know, one or two events a year. And I know there's organizations that work really hard. I really, I want to continue to be also good stewards of our residence funds. And I want to be fair. I want to be fair to every organization that comes forward. I, I want to, I would like to have this be the last the last fee waiver that we do. Because I don't want the message to continue to be in our city that the city will be waiving fees indefinitely for every event and every organization. Because, trust me, we, we like and we support and we believe in a lot of the organizations. We really do. And we want to be supportive. But once again, having said that, it is important that we also are fair. Because if we continue to do this, then, you know, our funds are going to take a hit with every event that comes before us and every organization that asks for the for the fees to be waived, then we're gonna be in a difficult spot. You know, I have no problem with supporting this ask as really the last ask that we entertain as a council. Certainly, there are other ways that, I know that we have a fund for organizations that they can apply for. And, you know, once the money, those monies are allocated, you know, for the year, then they're done. But I think that we, we as a council need to need to be financially prudent. And again, not that this amount is gonna, you know, break the bank, but I'm just saying, moving forward, I can see a lot of other organizations continuing to come to us for funding. Councilmember Sosa.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's definitely a difference between in-kind and helping organizations, taking a case-by-case scenario depending on, you know, what they're trying to accomplish and what it actually brings to our community. There's a big difference between that and also just giving money away, writing a check for whatever event, you know. You know, we have the hundred thousand dollar cap on on helping some of these nonprofits in the community. I mean, it doesn't mean that we have to give all hundred thousand dollars away. It doesn't mean we have to. There's no guarantees. Doesn't mean we have to write any checks. You know, I believe in a very stringent process for these organizations to go through to to see if it makes sense. Also, I think there needs to be checks and balances and follow-up. We need to analyze receipts and, you know, make sure all, you know, the whole process is seen through. But I just, you know, going forward, I would say case-by-case scenario as far as in-kind, you know, waivers of fees. But to me, it's just that it's a big difference between that and flat out just writing a check and giving money away. So my response to that is, you know, going forward, just, it would be a case-by-case scenario.
I'm just thinking back to all the golf tournaments that we've done. The difference there is it's more of a charity donation rather than waiving of fees. So we probably need to make a distinction in that regard where we are developing a scholarship or contributing to police funds or when we do our foursomes at the golf tournaments. So I'm just looking for clarification between those things that we're doing for charity and those things that we are outright just waiving fees to organizations. We've had this discussion before with La Cotta donating fees there and how much of it we wanted to upfront pay. So I'm just looking at the distinction as we go forward to what I care whether we're going to set.
Correct. And again, I think we need to be fair. I think that is also the message. There's gotta be, you know, fairness and if we, if we fund some and not others, well, why, why, why did the council agree on this one and not that one? I think just moving forward, it's, it may be on a case-by-case, but I really, Councilmember Sosa, I really want to refrain from doing that because it just, it sends, it sends a different message that we can, we're gonna support one versus another.
Right. No, and I get what you're saying, Madam Mayor, and I agree. I don't know when giving funds or waiving in kind fees started for nonprofits. I'm not sure when that started. But it's kind of, you know, we're putting a predicament where it's like, well, you fund this group and you help fund this group and you waive the fees for this group. Why not us? So that's kind of a dangerous route to go. At some point, it does have to stop. But, you know, like I said, for me, there's a clear distinction between waiving of permit fees and helping an organization out with in-kind, with an in-kind donation as opposed to writing a check.
Okay, I will then move to approve this, this donation as a last as a last donation to an organization.
Well, in-kind waiver, in-kind fee waiver? I'll second that.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with Mayor Portman through your absence.
Thank you for that. At this time, this City Council meeting will be adjourned in memory of Georgia Department of Corrections Correctional Officer Juan Robert Clark, who was killed in the line of duty at the Smith State Prison. South Carolina Richland County Sheriff's Department Deputy Jacob Eric Salbrin, who died in a vehicle crash. Colorado Department of Corrections Community Parole Officer Christine Garin Sandoval, who was struck by a vehicle during an attempted arrest of a parolee. Manhattan Beach Police Department Motorcycle Officer Chad Swanson, who died in a multi-vehicle crash in Carson. United States Senator Dianne Feinstein and Sergeant Emilio Guerrero of the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office Bureau of Investigation and his wife Annabelle Guerrero, local teacher formerly employed by Downey Unified School District, who died in a car crash in Downey. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. The time, eight twenty-three.